Good evening. I want to call the July 25 meeting of the redistricting committee for school board and road board to order, please. And I believe minutes were sent out, and I'll ask our vice chairman Phillips to make a recommendation.
Motion to approve the minutes.
I have a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries. Everyone have fun doing their homework.
Curtis, on you.
I got with Mike Curtis one day last week and asked Mike to put together a couple of scenarios. And no one get their panties all in a wad about this, but we're not going to be doing the same things that the redistricting committee was doing, okay? And one of the things that, one of the first things we're going to look at is contiguous districts. So that means that when we're looking at these, incumbency is not considered. That doesn't mean that's what we're going to recommend, or it doesn't mean that that's what's going to come out of this committee, but that's where we're going to start, okay? And actually, before we do, I think we've got two members of the committee that weren't here week before last, and I'd just like for you guys to kind of introduce yourselves and where you're from.
Okay. I'm Tanya Nell. I do live in Laverne. I've been there almost nine years. I've had, what, four kids going through the schools there in Laverne, so I've got a little bit of a vested interest there. I'm kind of new to this, so I'm still learning it, but I'm interested in helping to, what, deliver a few of your representative.
Thank you, Tanya. You're welcome.
And I'm Aaron Holliday, currently serving on the school board from Zone 1 here in the county.
Welcome, Aaron. This committee was formed because of a request that came from more than one commissioners that represent, I keep calling it the northern end of the county, and I can do that affectionately simply because that's where I was born and raised, is in Laverne, so I kind of know that area quite a bit. But anyways, a couple of members of the county commission asked for this committee at the request of officials mostly from Laverne that wanted representation that maybe wasn't so spread out. And I'd like to offer the opportunity for both of you to make comments on that, and what are your goals, and what would you like to see this committee do?
Basically, what I've stated is it's just for, not just Laverne, but for all of the other areas in the county, to be able to all have representation. I know the old map here that I was shown, and again, I'm pretty new to this, so I'm still learning it, but, you know, it just looks kind of hodgepodge, you know, where they've just, I don't know how old the map is, but to me, it just doesn't seem like it's contiguous, like it should be. You know, maybe one person over here in the county that represents this part, but also isn't responsible for over here might not really understand what these guys over here need. That's just my thoughts there, is to maybe make it to where it's a little more uniform.
We also discussed a little bit about the difficult assignment that this will be. Even if, even if we can come up with a recommendation that this committee agrees on, reaches some type of consensus on, it may be difficult for it to pass and get full county approval. But we're going to give it a shot and do our best. At one point in time, Grant goes back, Grant served on the county commission for eighty-seven years, Grant? Is that what it was?
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six years. Grant was a county commissioner for twenty years, about twenty years, and has been a member of the school board now for at least eight.
Eight, yeah.
And I can probably remember that at one point in time, there was some kind of conformity to it. There was touching districts, but the way the county has grown, and especially the northern end of the county has grown, just to put population in certain districts to get those correct and right is kind of what has put us into the situation that we're in. The redistricting committee had several goals, of course, and one of them was to, was to get the population right as a result of the census that was taken in 2010, but also to look at incumbency when we were looking at that. So they really could not accomplish the goal that they set out, and some of the policies that they established for themselves early on, and, and create that contiguous situation for school boards and road boards both. So it couldn't be done. So we're looking at it a little different way, and, and I think we can. The only thing that we can't do, I shouldn't say the only thing, but one major thing that we can do is change county commission districts. They are actually set in concrete right now, and they cannot be changed, and will not be changed. So the only thing we can look at, and I don't think we have any form of handcuffs as it relates to what we can do with school board and road, and the road board. I think state law, help me, Robert, if I'm saying this wrong, but state law really has specific things that you can do when forming congressional districts, but when it comes to the county assigning school board, road board type of districts, it's, it's pretty much very simple, and it just says the county will establish, and it doesn't give a whole lot of guidelines. Is that kind of it in a nutshell, Robert?
Well, sort of. The private act says that we have to have seven school board zones, and in each zone there has to be three county commission districts. But it says that the county at any time can re-figure which commission district, go to which school board, road board zone. So this committee, if it wishes, can re-figure what the school board and road board map looks like.
That's right. Almost what I said, but said much, much better by a bright legal mind. So to kind of bring us up to date, that's where we are. We're going to be looking at probably a whole number of things over the next few months. Don't know how long this will take. I think the county commission has given us nine months. I boldly stated we'd need three, and we might not need any more than that as we get into that, as we get into this. I think there'll be a lot of questions and a lot of concerns, especially from people who are, who represent the middle and the southern end of the counties, and not so much the northern end of the county. Any questions before, before we actually start looking at some maps?
Commissioner, I wanted to offer my own personal interest as well, in an introductory sense. My presence here on the committee is very much to represent the interest of the school board, and the attitude that the school board members currently have, and that they historically have had, in that, once elected, that they represent the entire county, and that they have reason to make decisions for the entire county's interest. And that's very much the commitment that each of them have. As such, they're very interested in the issue of incumbency, and they are taking note of the matter that when redistricting was there for the county commissioners, that incumbency was held, and as this rezoning process comes through, that the incumbency priority would have a similar weight and significance. On a personal basis, I have been challenged to completely appreciate concerns of underrepresentation by certain areas of the northern end of the county. I would certainly hope that all areas of the county are equally and appropriately represented currently and will be in the future.
Thank you, Aaron. The, the task was not difficult to do, as difficult as one might think when the redistricting was accomplished last year. But then some got to looking at, at the map and saw that there were islands out there, Tanya, and that's what we were talking about, and didn't like it, and asked us to take another look. I think the redistricting committee actually did that and really couldn't accomplish several of the goals, one being the incumbency goal. Just, it just couldn't be done. So they went forward with what was, in essence, their original plan. Some lines were, of course, redrawn a little bit more, and some neighborhoods were moved to other commission districts, and, and some new added, but it was really kind of minor overall, what you normally would expect in, in a redistricting plan like that. So your sentiment is probably, probably reflected also by the school board, I'm sorry, also by the road board, that it's an important part for the road board as well. And once again, we're not, we're not, I'll walk out before we get into the same type of thing that the redistricting committee got into, okay? Because if you look at the restrictions that they had, they really couldn't do a lot. And the guidance that they had, we don't have that same guidance, okay? So the easiest thing to do, and what we interpreted, that the purpose of this committee was to look and see if we could put districts together that were contiguous to each other and have a similarity in, in representation. And that's where we're going to start tonight, okay? I want to, once again, reiterate a hundred percent, this is not something that I'm recommending, or something that anyone on this committee is recommending, but it's a place for us to start. We have to start somewhere. And I asked Mike to put together a couple of maps, and, and he has not only done that, but probably has a couple of scenarios that we can kind of look at tonight. That's what we'll do. We'll discuss those a little bit, and then see if there's a way, any of us have ideas to maybe change that up a little bit, and then take a look at a different approach, if there is such a thing. And once again, I'm not the sharpest guy in the world.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to kind of follow what Mr. Holliday said. I, I'm a road board member, and I think most of the, all the road board members have the same view, do we, we're elected to a, an area, a zone, cover three districts, but I think when we decide to do things, we do it, and we want to do everything what's best for the county. What I think is a little bit different from the road board perspective versus school board is, from the road board and roads, you know, there are some districts that incumbents the city of Laverne and Murf, the city of Murphysboro and Smyrna. So from our standpoint, I guess not from, not representing, but we do not, our road's not the same, like, there may be a majority of a road board member, most of his district may encompass the whole city of Murphysboro. So he doesn't have a whole lot of road plan as far as what roads are paved and done, so some way, actually, I, I represent part of Laverne, and so does Mr. Victory, so from a road board standpoint, I mean, I, and I don't know if there's, you know, it may be more towards schools, school board presentation, or what, what's going on there, but it's not, hasn't been so much of a road board issue, so. Not saying that we don't, we don't have a lot of roads to pave and do, we don't care about Laverne or any other, in Murphysboro, I'm just saying it just doesn't really seem to be a lot of issues, so.
This is Rutherford County. A lot of us have been around Rutherford County a long, long time, and there's nothing more grassroots than Rutherford County government to Rutherford County citizens, okay?
Absolutely.
What we do affect the citizens of Rutherford County, what the legislature does in Nashville affects not only their district, but the entire state. And this is kind of the same here. What we do affects the entire county and not just a district that we represent. We represent neighbors, and that's what makes it so neat, because they have our ear, and, what we do, we want to do what's in their best interest, but we also need to do what's in the county's best interest as, as well. So I agree with everything you guys said a hundred percent. So you guys need to be a little bit talkative as we kind of go through this process, and we'll take some time to take, take a look at a couple of these scenarios that Mike has put together. And let me just go ahead and tell you, Mike Curtis, for those of you that know him, is on the ball and pretty darn sharp, and, and we're probably going to lean on him really, really hard and heavy through this process. We've got an election coming up in a couple of weeks, so after tonight, I would suggest that we probably go maybe three weeks, get through that election cycle before we meet again, okay? And not, not worry about anything else but this, this election cycle that we're kind of going through. And I know some of you have races to run and those kinds of things, okay? Any other questions, any other comments? Thank you for being here tonight. Mike, show us what you got.
Yes, sir. Mr. Phillips, I'm going to turn the light off so you can see better. The first thing I'm going to show you, I, as Chairman Phillips pointed out, he called me, and we wanted to see a couple scenarios, and I put these two together. What I've done, and I do have a map, interactive map that we can go through later and explore different scenarios if we wish, that we can just take commission districts and assign them to a road board, school board combination zone number, and we can actually create our own as we go through this and study the ramifications of them relatively easily. These are just two quick PDFs that I created, and they're, the colors are not showing up as well as I would like. This pink area here is one, and this is kind of a bluish-purple area, they are just kind of showing up different now, but as the projector warms up. And then you've got a beige area here. This one, the primary concern was trying to put all of Laverne into one school zone. And by doing that, I started there, and then I've tried to put this area together here, the large rural areas here, the Rockville-Eagle Bowl area here, and then I ended up with what was current, these two are currently what it is in the city right now in Murphysboro. And then these two areas here tie the Amble, Blackman, Florence, northern part of Rutherford County area together, or, excuse me, the northern part of Murphysboro together. This, this is one of the scenarios. The other scenario...
Mike, before you go on...
Yes, sir.
I have a little bit of an issue with colors, and that seventeen is in the same district as eighteen and twenty-one?
Yes, sir, I can actually zoom into that.
That's, that's okay, I just wanted to make sure.
And you can see it clearer that way.
Okay, thank you.
It's right there, seventeen, eighteen, and twenty-one. And then thirteen, fifteen, and sixteen, nine, nineteen, and four, one, five, and ten, three, eleven, and twelve, two, four, and six, and seven, eight, and twenty-one.
Do you have, you have what's, you have what's current right now?
Yes, sir, I can show that to you.
Why don't you pull that out before we kind of do anything else?
This is current right here. Oops, sorry. And I'm going to change these colors so they show up better. Give me just a second here. Everybody see that clear? We have one up here which consists of five, eleven, and twelve, two which consists of one, two, and three, three which consists of four, six, and seven, four which consists of eight, nine, and ten, five which consists of seventeen, eighteen, and twenty-one, six which consists of thirteen, fifteen, and sixteen. And this is all in the city of Murphysboro.
Is this the original map that, who come up with this map?
This is the one that the redistricting committee adopted.
How did they develop this map there? How did they develop those lines?
Those are, actually, the county commission lines, districts, lines were drawn first, and then the school board and road board were, in essence, fitted in after that. They got the populations right with the twenty-one county commission districts.
The private acts currently indicate which county commission districts, which number county commission districts make up which number school board zones.
Yeah, I think that needs some explanation. So everybody's on the same page with the numbers and the legend that you're showing, you know, what's the green number versus the red number?
The big green numbers are the zone numbers, and then the smaller numbers are the county commission district numbers. So for instance, there in the purple, Zone 5 would be made up of county commission districts seventeen, eighteen, and twenty-one, and that's pursuant to private act.
And when you say Zone 5, are you talking about...
That's both school and road board.
Okay, they're, they are...
Same.
...silentating us, okay?
They do not used to be the same number, but that's one thing that we got fixed this time.
Now, the population of each one of these is supposed to be pretty close to the same, correct?
Correct. Each county commission district's target population was approximately 12,500 individuals, so.
Now, where Zone 5 and Zone 3 is supposed to have a, pretty often the same amount of people, right?
That's right.
Both people.
Right. There was an overall plus or minus five percent ratio.
Now, the map that you sent out, the base map, did it have a legend on it? I couldn't find a legend, unless we had the capability of layers.
Um, you, did I send you a PDF?
Yes, PDF.
Yeah, PDF. If you opened up your PDF, you were on the left-hand side.
Yes.
There, let me go with one, I'll show it to you. On the left-hand side here, you see this, what looks like layers?
Sure.
If you open that up, you can turn things on and off, but it doesn't show a legend. There should have been a legend on the map that I sent out. This one here is just a quick map I sent out to Chairman Phillips. I'd have to look that one up to see, there should have been a, I usually put the legends on the upper left-hand side of the map.
Okay, all right. But in this, in this number, all those numbers right there, that not, they, you don't have the school board and the road, and the road board zones.
Correct. I just grouped them by colors.
Okay, correct. And, and by the way, that's Nicole Lester back there that straightened us all out, and she's really busy this time of the year, and will be for the next couple of months, but it's a pleasure that you've been here. Nicole, thank you very much.
And each one of the, was it, school and road board zones, was that 12,500 or the county commissioner?
The 12,500 was each county commission district plus or minus five percent variance.
Okay, all right.
So if you put three of them together, it's going to be thirty-seven, 500, and the plus or minus five percent variance.
I got a question, Mr. Chairman. This is the current map right here, but the, but the big question is being whether these, this map right here and these zones are contiguous, right?
That, that's my understanding, Keith.
Okay. Well, I guess, maybe Mike or somebody else can help. What, what is, by this map that we have here right now, what, what about these zones is not contiguous?
If you look at four.
It's four.
That's the main one.
Yeah.
Because they're not touching. See how there's twenty that runs right in between both of them?
Right. County commission districts nine and ten are up there in the white blue color, and then county commission district twenty runs in between nine and eight, which is, eight is supposed to be part of the same zone as nine and ten.
Okay. Let me, let me ask you this, maybe Mike, you can answer this. When we, when the other committee met with the redistricting of the commission districts, was that where twenty separates nine and eight, was that there at that time?
No.
We did that?
No, twenty, twenty ended up getting pushed out towards the county line to maintain that plus or minus five percent variance as required for the redistricting process.
Okay, when that happened, that made nine and eight not be contiguous, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I mean, I, I just, I, and I'm not, and I'm not bashing what they did, I'm just saying, I just wonder, you know, if that one right there, and I know we had to get to the, the population, I just don't know if we didn't, you know, we kind of created a little bit of a problem here.
I think the best way to put this is, is this was an unintended result of the, the redistricting process and the growth and so on. When the redistricting committee met, everybody was very meticulous about making certain that the lines that were drawn were drawn in agreement with what the law states, you know, how they should be, based on census block boundaries, based on main roads whenever possible, or other natural boundaries as is permissible under the redistricting guidelines. The county commission districts were looked at very thoroughly, zoned down to street level, and looked at to try to determine what the ramifications would be of placing a line here or there. There was a lot of adjusting that went on. Once that was achieved for the county commission districts, it really was not discovered that there was an issue here with the zones resulting to that until after the committee had really wrapped up. So the committee actually came back and looked at this and talked about it, and tried to determine if there was a way to solve it before the December 31 deadline, and just really there was not any way to go in and solve it at that point in time.
Due to not having enough time for that committee to go on, or just...
Partially, partially due to that. We also could not get anyone to say definitively that there is any legal requirement that they be contiguous for the zones. There, there is a requirement of contribuity for county commission districts and so on, and the reason being, so you don't have any areas that are either double represented, overlapping, or, you know, unrepresented, where there's any holes in between, all the lines have to touch and meet up. So right now, all of the citizens of Rutherford County are represented by a school board or a road board member, and, and that is the, really the reason behind the contribuity issue, and when you're talking about the county commission districts, state senate, state house, and so on.
And I'll quit. So in other words, the way it's laid out, we, or I say, that committee just did the best they could do, not, not trying to make anything be, these districts or zones to be not contiguous, is just the best scenario I guess they could come up with, and still meet the...
Because the private acts laid out that Zone 4 was comprised of county commission districts eight, nine, and ten, and that's not something that that committee had the authority to change.
That's it.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
I think it's important to note, as I observed the work of the redistricting committee, that there was, there were, there were seven criteria that were, I believe it was seven criteria that were considered, among them, the contribuity issue, incumbency, communities of interest, you know, different things like that. And as I witnessed the debate about county commission district twenty, it was really a sorting of those priorities, and in trying to keep the Alma Ville community connected to county commission district twenty, that resulted in a choice being made that the county commission district twenty would extend to the county line, as opposed to getting the population it needed through some other expansion. And I recall representatives on the redistricting committee who really wanted that Alma Ville community to have that connection to, you know, some, some other areas and not be split. Had it been just pulled off of the county line just a small amount, there could have been a sliver of... zone four that would have connected those two districts. All of that being said, you know, the task that we have before us is to try and consider, you know, what we can do with the county commission districts that we have been handed. But I think that it is important, as we look at these things, to, to remember the choices that were made by the redistricting committee in sorting those priorities, uh, which is most important. Is it continuity, or is it community of interest, is it incumbency? And for each individual zone that we take a look at, uh, how do we, how do we rank those priorities?
It was, uh, it seemed to be a fairly easy assignment to go through that until this map was established. And, and, uh, I, I believe number twenty, district, county commission district number twenty changed as much as it did.
There, um, building on what Mr. Holliday said, uh, Mike, you might zoom in a little bit on that twenty, uh, area. And you can show this committee where the line was contemplated and being shifted down Almaville Road. The, uh, to that area over on the western portion there, uh, all of that from county commission district nine down to county commission district eight. Imagine that in blue, and there would have been a connector right, right down through there. Besides Almaville Road, if we had done that, then there was another area, um, twenty would be losing some population and giving it up to, I forget if it was nine or eight.
Both. It was both.
Part, part was going to nine and part was going to eight. And we still would have been within the plus or minus five percent variance, um, to, to keep that target population, uh, for all three of those involved county commission districts. But ultimately, uh, because of the discussion about communities of interest, it was determined that would not be, uh, the, the preferable solution.
I think as we move forward and we consider this question of continuity, it's worth noting that in the debate that the redistricting committee had, they chose to give continuity a lesser level of importance and a higher level of importance for communities of interest. We're not bound by that, but it is the choice of others who have been in our similar position.
Hey, Nicole. Mr. Chairman, if you want. Do we know how the state law will affect what we can do to change in with the fact that there, you know, road district two, they're supposed to be elected for six years in twenty fourteen, if I'm not mistaken? And then you got road district seven till they're supposed to be elected this year and run till twenty eighteen, if I'm... Is that correct? How would that affect what we can do in changing those districts? Do you know?
Well, I mean, that, it, it depends on what the changes are, I suppose. You know, if, if you make such changes, that would create, um, an issue with the incumbent living outside of the district. And that would be one issue that we would have to look into. I can't advise you what the law is on that issue, but really, it just depends on, on what happens. The, certainly, right now, th- these are dictated by a private act specific to Rutherford County. So if any changes were made, that would require a recommendation by this committee to the full commission. Who would then have to vote on those changes. And then that would have to be carried to the state legislature to, um, pass that. And then it has to come back down to the county commission to essentially be ratified. And they have to vote on it again. And I believe it may need to be a two-thirds vote, so, um, it, it can be done. Obviously, there's a, there's a method and there's a procedure to do that. As far as the ramifications, it would just depend on what changes are made.
Kind of answer all your questions about the current map? Okay. Go ahead, Mike.
Would you like to go back and see that first scenario I was showing you again?
Yeah, please.
This puts... again, I did put zone numbers on this because I figured you'd want to be able to number these as you wished and how you wanted to do it to make it things match better as far as incumbency and other things. And since incumbency wasn't gonna be considered, I didn't figure a zone number was gonna be important. So I just left these as colors. I, I remember now why I did this. The, uh, the green here is seven, eight, and twenty. It keeps them clustered together. Two, four, and six, uh, keeps the Lascasis, Milton, Kiproll, uh, Buchanan area clustered together. Seventeen, eighteen, and twenty-one keeps the southeast portion of Murfreesboro and the MKSU campus area. Thirteen, fifteen, and sixteen keeps the central area of Murfreesboro together. Uh, nine, fourteen, and nineteen kind of spreads out, uh, because you got North Murfreesboro, you've got the Florence area, then you got the Blackman North. This really doesn't have a community name up here. And then you've got three, eleven, and twelve, which is the majority of Smyrna and the Leanna area. And then you've got one, five, and ten, which is all of Laverne, I think, except for a small portion down here in nine and, and a small portion in twelve, um, and part of Smyrna. That is with Laverne being all one zone.
Is there Smyrna municipal district in nineteen?
Uh, yes. There is some Smyrna in nineteen in this area right here.
So it actually spreads Smyrna over three districts?
Yes, it does.
So you take the line from three districts and create three districts for...
Smyrna.
For Smyrna. Although they are contiguous, but it still would be three different representatives.
Let me, I got a question, Mr. Chairman, of... Mike, uh, the way this map is laid out, you know, we were talking about, uh, uh, before, in the commission districts, staying with the population, does that, how does this change anything on the, you know, it was about twelve thousand five or something like that?
Each of your units, each of your county commission units are gonna be twelve thousand five hundred plus or minus five percent.
Based on this layout right here?
Any of them.
Well, those numbers...
Because this is the same commission district you start with. These are all the same units.
Okay.
And as such, they don't change.
Okay. But with this map, you do change, uh, what, what about incumb...
Yeah, have you not put that in there, Mike?
I did not put incumbency in this.
Okay.
What's your next scenario? Let's look at the next one.
I, I got one other question for this, for me, it relates to the road board. Do you have any way that you can show number of road miles that would be covered by one zone?
Um, I could, with some time. I could bring them back to the next meeting if you wanted to let me know that.
And the reason, the reason I want to point that out...
It just takes time to put that together.
To this committee, uh, it may not be for school board, but you take like two, four, and six. That representative is gonna have a ton of road miles to cover versus all the other road board members.
Yeah, roughly fifty percent.
Absolutely.
I think you're gonna have that problem though with six and eight being as big as they are anyway. And I mean, I mean, I mean, eight myself, but I mean, them two areas is, the population is real small, but your road, country road area is big.
They're probably only covered most of the county roads.
Right.
Right. Versus everything else gonna be co- covered by either Smyrna, Laverne, or city of Murfreesboro. I'm just trying to keep that in mind from a road board perspective.
One comment on, uh, you know, the lines between, um, Laverne and Smyrna. You know, if we ever agree, you know, if we get down to a certain map that, you know, meets all the criteria, you know, I'm sure we're gonna have to do some adjusting on the fine lines. And there might be a, you know, some clear-cut, you know, definition between, uh, Laverne and Smyrna and Murfreesboro and Smyrna and, and that. And I'm sure this is just the big picture of what we're looking at now.
Well, the, um, the redistricting committee, when they did the redistricting process, due to the large growth of the county, they determined that municipal city limits were something that they really couldn't follow. So as such, you're not gonna be able to follow them either.
Well, not necessarily saying follow them, but looking at lines that really where there's a distinguished separation, whether it's a road or some kind of geographical feature.
I see what you're saying. So when you look at it, you can...
Yeah. You know, rather than, you know, having just a line across the map.
This one here took Laverne and, uh, took two parts of the Laverne that were primarily Laverne and added it to the north part of Smyrna, creating one nice round cluster here. Putting two, fourteen, and three together again. Putting four with fifteen and seventeen in Murfreesboro. Taking six, eighteen, and twenty-one together. Seven, eight, and twenty together. Nine, ten, and eleven together, and then thirteen, sixteen, and nineteen together. This one tried to accomplish, trying to keep clusters of them, of triplets together.
One of the seven priorities is compactness of the, uh, district. And I think that this is probably an example of trying to achieve that compactness.
You get most of Laverne in that one, five, and twelve, right? Most of Laverne?
Roughly seventy percent.
Okay. And what does it do for Smyrna, Aaron? Can, can you figure that out by looking at it?
Um, this, I'm sorry, go ahead, Aaron.
Yeah, it's fine. You're, you say it.
Okay, this here is, um, Lowery Street. This is Sam Ridley Parkway. Let me get my pointer here. Where's the pointer at? Sorry. Now, it's not doing what I want. This is Sam Ridley Parkway here. This is part of Old Nashville Highway, and then it meanders through some neighborhoods. And this is Stewart's Creek here. So you can kind of see where the proportions of Smyrna this is. This is the interstate here, through here. I can show you this on the, on the big map, or on the main map, but it looks easier because I've got municipal boundaries. This is just a PDF that I exported out.
Mike, on this scenario right here, did you, I mean, I, I know what you done for getting three together, but did you, what consideration did you take in putting numbers?
Um, I mean, it's...
Like one, five, and twelve, why did you put them together? Just cause of...
Because, because it was a nice, as...
Okay.
Compactness.
Okay, I, I, that's what I wanted, I just wanted...
It's made a nice, compact cluster.
Now, explain those, uh, boundaries again, if you don't mind, uh, Mr. Curtis.
This here...
Yes.
Is forty-one, seventy, Lowery Street, Hartsborough Road, Northwest Broad Street, whatever you want to call it. This here is Sam Ridley Parkway.
Okay.
This is I twenty-four running down through here.
Okay.
This is, um, Jefferson Pike and, um, Cheney Road. This is a creek just north of the, um, the airbase. This is Stewart's Creek running down through here.
So does twelve take in the airport?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. And where's Weekly Lane at?
Weekly Lane, um, runs roughly up through this way, right through here. With it, see the follow the thumb on the hand?
So you're also taking east of Weekly Lane, from Laverne's area. Anyway, okay. I got my bear.
Yeah. This is twelve that I was just showing you.
Right.
Right here is Weekly Lane.
Okay. Basically gonna have, uh...
And what I was showing you was one, five, and twelve, you got these here.
Now, that's the second one, correct?
Yes, sir, this is one with the...
Can we flip back, can we flip back to the first one?
Yes, sir. Actually, let me get both of them the same size. We can flip back and forth between them. You can see the difference here. I feel like my doctor now, one.
Ooh. Oh, I have, I just, I have to, I need some time to study, you know? On, on the bottom of, um, the area of eleven, is that, um, is that Stones River or what?
Stewart's Creek.
Stewart's Creek?
Yeah, Stewart's Creek.
Okay.
Oh, actually, it's part of, it's Chicken Pike.
Okay.
Old Nashville Highway and, I forget the name of this road through here. I can look it up real quick.
Baker, that name.
Stewart Valley.
Stewart Valley.
Stewart's Creek runs right next to it.
Wow.
How about some different scenarios from where Mike said, look at them too, could we...
Yeah.
Could we progress with some more, man?
We can explore those options. I'm prepared for that.
On that line, that Stewart Valley.
Yes, sir.
What's the, what was the... I mean, how was that set, just?
Are you asking why the redistricting committee chose this?
Yes.
If I remember correctly, we were...
It's basically splitting, you know, some subdivisions out there with that line.
Uh, this, that was, that discussion was covered in the redistricting committee meeting. The, uh, the initial thing we wanted to do with eleven was to initially just follow Old Nashville Highway and this area through here. And more population was needed, so they take, took two fingers going this way and this way, to gather more population. There were not enough census block boundaries, um, in this area because Stewart's Creek came through here. And there was nothing through there that they could determine to make a census block boundary. And as such, this was just one huge census block, and as such, it had to all either go one way or another. And to balance out eleven, they needed to put it in eleven.
And just so you know, the census blocks are set by the United States Census Bureau. This has nothing to do with us or the state of Tennessee. It's nothing that we could change.
When you say that, what does that exactly mean, though?
Sorry?
Census block.
Census blocks. The census block is the smallest geographic area, uh, that you can use in drawing your district lines. So, you know, if it has ten people in it, or twenty people, or a hundred people...
Or zero.
Yeah, or zero. Some of them have zero. You cannot divide that census block.
Um, Chairman, one thing, uh, I just, I'd like to go ahead and mention to Mike. Well, you know, when you come back, it's two scenarios that we have now, and if you come back with some more. If you could, when you, when we do that, I guess maybe... If you could, when you, when we do that, I guess maybe by the time we meet, by the next time, um, could you include in those, uh, incumbency and, um...
Election cycle.
Yes, and like, uh, from the road board perspective, miles, road miles in those districts or those zones, so we can kind of compare that.
Mike, like on those, just what Keith was saying on scenario one and scenario two, just put a star where the current representative lives and, and also what that election cycle is. Uh, I think six-year cycle?
Well, the, the, there's four, like right now, there's four road board members that are running.
It's typically a four-year cycle.
Right.
But to, to even out, once we, as the redistricting committee, once the redistricting committee adjusted the numbers of the zones to match, therefore where, if you look at the map where the dark blue is up there, county commission districts five, eleven and twelve make up school and road board zone one. It used to be that if it was school board zone one, it was road board zone seven. Or something to that effect.
It was five.
Five or so.
One was...
Like one was five, one equaled five, five equaled seven and seven equaled one.
Right.
Which really make no sense whatsoever because they were the same grouping of three county commission districts across the board. They just had different numbers. And for the most part, the majority of them were on the same election cycle, even though they shared different numbers. So to make it less confusing for the candidates, the voters and the election office, something they've been trying to achieve for years was to get them named the same number name. We did achieve that, but in doing so, to be able to keep them on the same election cycle, we had to, um, discuss either shortening or lengthening the term for one school board member to be elected this year in August of two thousand twelve and one to be elected in August of two thousand fourteen. The committee as a whole determined that it would be better to extend the term by two years rather than cut short the term by two years to, to achieve getting them on the same election cycle. We also determined that that would affect the road board, not the school board, because the school board is governed by state statutes that, that provide that the school board members shall serve a four-year term. There's not a similar statute that we were able to locate for road board members. So it would be a whole lot easier to change the road board terms than to try to override a state law that pertained to school board members.
Staggered school board and road board both, are they on staggered terms?
They are, they are.
Four and three.
That's, that's just another issue that, that sometime, at some point in time, would have to deal with.
If they were not staggered terms, then we would not have had to deal with extending the terms of two zone members to get them on the same cycle.
So the current road board members that are running in this election cycle, there will be six-year terms?
Everybody will have a four-year term except for one who will have a six-year term.
District two.
District, okay, okay.
We can explore some of these options and possibilities here. I have up here some data with the county commission districts. This is actually the two Laverne plan. The two, the two zones in the Laverne plan, as I call it, which is where they're all clustered together in groups and triplets. We can go in here and I can change, just for example, say we wanted to make county commission district one seven, or seven. So I can just come in here and change seven and hit enter and it just changes the color. So we can come in here and we can explore options as you wish and how they look. And we can also come in here and we can turn on the residences of both old road and school board members and explore those also as to where their incumbency is.
Is there a way to clean it up and just take off the roads?
I can take the roads off, yes. I was just leaving them on there as a reference.
Right.
And we can zoom into specific areas and see more. So if you want to explore something, I'm here to help, whatever you want to do.
This is, this is the current?
No, sir, this is the, the one you just looked at, the second plan you just looked at.
Okay, okay. Yeah, yeah, that's great, you're right.
Commissioner Phillips, of course, the issue of incumbency is in a much different focus three weeks from now.
Could be. This three is probably not going to be made again until after, true, August, the August election.
We've seen at least two different cluster scenarios. You got one more?
No, sir, I just made two.
Okay, that's fine. Can we, as members of this committee, do some of the similar, same, similar things that you've done? Or are you the only one that can do that, Mike?
We've just recently explored some new technology this week that might allow us to do this. I can't say yes for sure, but I have a pretty good idea that we will be able to.
Okay.
And if I've got three weeks to work on it, I might be able to come pretty close to something that you all can go online with and come up with your own scenarios.
Robert, just drawing on your expertise and, uh, i- is there any recommendation that this committee could, maybe even Nicole, if she's still here, that this committee could do that would put two school board members in the same district?
Yes, you can.
We could.
Well, that was the problem with the map that I had proposed in December when the committee reconvened, was that it had a school board zone where two of the members were going to be in the same district. One of them would be up for election this time. Uh, and then of course, the other one was up for election in two years. And the way it was drawn, the one who was up for election this year just would not be able to run because he would be in the zone that wasn't up for election until two thousand fourteen. And the committee recommended the map five to four and then, uh, some pressure was inserted and then they went back and rescinded the map and decided not to do that. But, yes, you can draw two people together and we can't predict who's going to be in the office in two thousand sixteen or two thousand eighteen. Correct. And to me, it's very, very, um, arrogant to assume that somebody's still going to be in the office at that time because they might not run again, uh, they may be defeated in the election. There's no telling what might happen between now and then.
The only thing that we can't affect is we can't kick them out of office.
Correct.
They have to full, finish their term. Yeah.
Okay. Where do we go from here?
I've got a recommendation.
All right.
Why don't we some way get copies of these two scenarios and each one of us on their own? Try to, you know, obviously Laverne and Smyrna is going to have some common interest, you know, where we could get together and, and try to, you know, decide on what best suits, you know, those two. And likewise, you know, um, if there's other representatives that represent other areas. But that's what I'd like to do. I'd like to get a couple of maps and draw some lines on them and then come back, come back to Curtis, Mr. Curtis, and say, okay, how's the populations fall out? How does the, um, you know, roads, you know, miles fall out? And, and make sure we're not shoving anyone out of their district, you know? Just something that makes geographical sense, you know?
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Curtis, but we, we cannot change, um, the makeup of the actual district. Like, we have to use the current county commission districts to make up these road board and school board.
So these scenarios he had, no lines can change.
We have to, we have to stay inside the three commissions.
Well, can we some way get a map that says, do not touch these lines? And then there's certainly a line between Smyrna. I've seen two scenarios that lines have changed on there.
Well, no, the, the county commission districts have not changed.
Colors have changed, but the lines have not changed.
That's correct.
The clusters.
The clusters have not.
Right.
You're just re-clustering.
If you look at this map, this scenario right here, those, those numbers up there represent the county commission districts.
Okay.
So...
Those lines can't change.
And if you notice, it was red dashed, lines cannot change.
So you're just moving pieces.
Yeah, puzzle pieces.
Different pieces of a puzzle placed together.
What I'd like to say on, on my end, what I'd like to do, uh, and I like what Mike did on the first two. As a matter of fact, I went through my map and I just draw the scenario myself. And the first two that he showed put Smyrna and Laverne just identical, what he did. I would like to see change on my end of the county, like maybe put eight. And I know it would put, like Keith said, about the roads along together, but I'd like to see, get six, seven and, six, seven and eight together and put us all right there together.
You can do that right now, can't you, Mike?
Yes, sir.
Say what I look for.
I can take and make six, seven and eight. Just make them four for grids. There they are. And, um, let's make thirteen five to balance all this out. Again, I'm just throwing out things out here. And then, um, make twenty part of six. This will balance everything out. There. You got six, seven and eight together. You now have, um, sixteen, nineteen and twenty together and you have thirteen, eighteen and twenty-one together.
Six, seven and eight, that's just from a geographical perspective, half the county almost.
Now you're going to be like, right, where you were was the other way.
Right.
I think Mr. Bratcher may have a really good concept here to be looking at, uh, a measure of, of county road mileage as, as it relates to each one of these groupings. And perhaps when we get back together, that, that could be a running total that would be reflected each time we make a change. In addition to that, we could also have a percentage of those communities of interest, be it the city of Murfreesboro, the city of Eagleville, the city of Laverne, the town of Smyrna, that, that, you know, we've talked about how we might be able to achieve seventy percent of the city of Laverne into a zone. And yet we then splinter Smyrna across three zones or, or something of that nature. And so if we could look at an even or, or equitable division of road responsibility per road board member and then also be measuring a balanced or, or a majority representation of those communities of interest. If we treat, we, we've heard, we can't follow those municipality lines. We're not going to be able to do that. But if we achieve seventy percent of one of those communities of interest and, and each of the communities of interest are at least seventy percent, then we may have actually achieved the goal.
I can put that data in and we can readily pull that out as we intend to adjust.
Each county commissioner district equals twelve thousand five hundred, roughly.
Right.
Okay.
Within...
Plus, plus or minus five.
Some of them are spot on, others are as much as...
So basically, we're just taking these pieces of puzzles and trying to develop something that's logical.
Something that...
Has good representation.
In some mind is more logical than the way it is right now.
We don't want one school board member on one side of the county and the other side of the county.
And, and the real difficult part is, is dealing with making them somewhat contiguous, but also making sense, that, that just, it just makes sense. And you don't want to put something together that just logically doesn't make sense. You're going to help out one community, but all of a sudden, when you're doing that, it's splintering another community. So it is, just doing some pre-work into this, I think most of you were expecting that. It's just not going to be an easy scenario. So we've got, we've got two different maps in addition to the current map that we're looking at. And what we're, what we're going to do is, uh, is take a look at those, um, uh, two different scenarios. Look at road mileage, is that one thing, to, to see what they are? Also look at, um, um, who the, if you could, Mike, just put a star and an asterisk or something like that. And the star is the county commissioner, the asterisk is the road board member and question mark is the school board member, or something like that, uh, in those districts. So, so we'll know where all of those folks are and, and the district that they represent. Number twenty, um, hasn't, it's probably changed more than, than any other district, but it's all...
Nineteen.
But it, yes, that's right. But it's also kind of logical when you look at it because it's growing in that direction too. So you'd almost think that it would have to grow in that direction. So from, to, to say that it splits those, uh, and it, and it creates some type of a, of an island for that district, it might do that, but the growth patterns are really strong in that area. Uh, the whole Blackman area and, and, and the Smyrna area down there have grown so much. And that's where we're building schools as well. So it just, it just makes sense and lo, it's logical for that to happen. But from that logic, it created some issues for undoubtedly some other folks. And once again, that's what we need to do is, is to figure out if what we can come up with is more logical. I don't even know how to begin to address, uh, election cycles and those kinds of things. And, and I suggest that we don't right now. Let's just look at a map and see if, uh, the map is more logical. And then we'll address the others. And, and that may just actually throw a monkey wrench in the whole deal. And, uh, but, but if, if we don't, if we don't look at, um, where people are and we look at the compactness of those districts, uh, I think that would be a really good place for us to start. We've got two scenarios. Let's take a look at that. And we've had a request to put down road mileage as an example. Uh, also where the current school board member lives and road board member lives. And we can probably adjust that a little bit depending upon, uh, the results of the election in a couple of weeks.
Yes, and I will have those adjustments placed at that time before the next meeting.
And we can take a look at that and if, if you guys, once again, take a, take a serious look at that and you said, your idea, maybe that's even, that's a third scenario that's right up there, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Just use, throw that one in there as well and just do that one. So let's have as much to take a look at as we, as we possibly can. You look at some of those districts, um, like, and I'm going to use seventeen as an example. You know, it's, it's the size of a pinhead compared to a quarter on some of the rest of them. And it can't have that many roads in it, but it's got a lot of people in it. So, so those are the, uh, those are the conflicts that, that we have. And it's just a tough, tough job. And I commend the redistricting committee for doing the job that they did and coming back and revisiting it and, and, uh, at least making some attempt to do that.
I'm saving this plan.
Okay.
So just ignore what I'm doing here.
So if, if we can have, if you can put together a PDF file, I think all of us can open those.
Yeah, I'll put them up on the SharePoint site.
Okay.
And for those who can't access that, let me know. I'll work with you, make sure we get something to you or get you into it.
You all got Mike's number and if you can't, open up what he sends out. Uh, and we want to take a look at, I think, road miles. We want to take a look at who's represented, uh, right now and then where that representation would be if we re, redid the school board districts and, and, uh...
What I'll do is I'll, I'll go and calculate all the road miles for each of these commission districts. And then we can display that on the screen as a number.
Okay.
And then you can look at and see how they're adjusted and how they go together. Um, I'll do the same thing with the percentage of municipalities. Murfreesboro, Smyrna, Laverne. Um, and well, equals easy. And well, equals easy, it's a hundred percent in eight. But, so we can see where, how much they are in each one, so you can look at those.
I might want to add a little something, I don't know if you can do that either. When you talk about the road miles, like in some of the districts, it's going to be, it's going to lie within the city limits of Murfreesboro, Smyrna, or Laverne.
I will take, I will take all of that out. Anything that's not maintained by the highway department will be taken out.
That's what I, that's what I'm saying.
State highways, interstates, anything inside municipalities, all of that will be removed.
Thank you.
What does those road board members do if they don't have any roads? Just to kind of review, Mike's going to send out some information that, that gives us more detail to look at. And then when we come back, we'll, we'll have, had the opportunity to look at that, ask more questions of Mike, and put together your own particular scenario. I'm, I'm not, I'm going to repeat this probably for the half dozen time, we need to be open-minded. We don't need to say, I'm not going to recommend any changes. It may be that we won't, you guys, okay? But it, let's just keep an open mind, and, and let's just say, this looks good and makes sense, and then we'll explore it further and see how much sense it really does make at some point in time. Commissioner Stevens said he put together a, a, a plan a little bit earlier, and the redistricting committee looked at that. Is that still a viable plan in your mind, Robert?
I think it is. I still have that saved on your computer.
I, I probably do. I just, it's in a different program, it's in that redistricting software, but I can probably pull it out.
It might also be good if, if we took a look at that next time, and I, I, I'm not real sure, Robert, if you can make that next meeting, but if we can pull that up and, and at least have one more, let Robert explain what he was talking about a little bit earlier.
One other thing I'd like to bring up, when we redrew Spring Hills Alderman Ward's about six years ago, and one of the things we did, my company, was that we wrote that probably, you know, the current population, but probably growth trends also, that, so that, you know, that plan would not be obsolete after one year, you know?
It's really kind of hard to do. Census is a really crazy moving target, and I think, let's see, the, the last one was two thousand, and I know the county commission adjusted that census a number of times.
We did three for Spring Hill within the ten-year period. Yeah, but, I mean, I just think it's, if you're looking at road miles, looking at everything else, you certainly have to look at that also.
Road miles is going to be really hard to look at. You're going to see some that's quadrupled what, what others are, and I'm not sure we're going to be able to, it'd be interesting to look at that.
Yeah, to see how far that is.
I'm not sure what we're going to be able to do about something like that. That, that map up there, if you look at it, and once again, I'm really colorblind, but I can tell that that bottom is, is, it looks like forty, forty-five percent of the county. And I'm not, I'm just not real sure that that's the compactness that we're looking for, but, you know, the other part of it is, the population may, may warn us doing something like that. And I know I mumbled and jumbled and confused things, but let's pick out what we think is the best scenario, you, okay? Doesn't mean that you're going to support it, you're going to vote for it, but this makes more sense than anything else that we've, that we've looked at so far, and then we'll progress from that point on, okay? And if it just doesn't work out, it doesn't work out. Doesn't mean that we can complete our assignment if we go to the county commission and say, we can't come up with a better idea. We've done our job, okay? That would be the recommendation. I'm not going to say that we want to take them a recommendation that we don't think is better than the one that we have right now. And that's our goal. Let's just, this thing, let's just say, this one makes sense, and then from there, let's progress to the next step to see who all it affects, and what the election cycles and those kind of things are, and what kind of an issue and problem that that would create. And then we'll get somebody, after we get the map, kind of the one that makes more sense to us, then we'll get someone to come in and explain to us the election cycles and all of those processes that would really be affected, and, and may, may just be, may be doable, and then again, it may, it may upset so many folks, it is not doable. So, does that make a certain amount of sense?
Now, are, are you going to say that, are we limited to these scenarios, or are you, or each one of us can come up with a scenario also?
My thought was, let's just look at this compactness right now, and then if, if there's another way to, to, to look at realigning those districts, I'm all ears. I know you're members of this committee, and all I'm trying to do is keep us moving. So you guys are, are.
I think it's, I mean, you know, just, I mean, it, it, we could have four, five different scenarios.
Yep.
That, that, I mean, these three that we've seen don't mean that they're perfect, or what we want. I mean, that means nothing we all want, but that gives us a start, like what you said.
That's right.
Yeah, and then we, we might conclude something else different that would suit everybody else a lot better, and still keep some of them like they are right there. So we got to have a start.
There's also going to be this communication process that we go through too, because, once again, what might solve a problem that causes to meet defer, in the first place, might create other problems that we're really not accomplishing any things. So let's just make sure that we're, we're going to go through this thing in a more deliberate process. So, Mike, you've got your assignment, and send out those PDF files, and if we have questions, and we'll call you, be very careful about groups of you guys getting together. You'll violate sunshine laws if you're, if you do that, so don't, two or three obvious, schedule a meeting and, and get together. It's, makes sense to do that, but.
Is that for committees?
Yeah.
It applies to those.
Okay, point in committees, okay. Sorry.
Mr. Chairman.
We got those scenarios.
Now, when we come together, obviously, we're not sure exactly what else we'll explore while we're here in three weeks. But do we maybe want to request the presence of the county attorney at that next meeting, or, because if we start looking at, you know, like I said, my biggest issue, what I brought up, was just the fact that, you know, there's these two road zones, road zones, that will be affected by, by what we do, so.
Nicole, who represented the county attorney's office at?
Mr. Pope was here some, and.
Josh?
Jeremy.
That was Josh?
Jeremy.
Jeremy?
Jeremy.
Okay. We'll, we'll probably try to get Jeremy here, okay?
He's going to Chattanooga, he's like the firm.
Jerry's, Jeremy's history. Maybe Josh, or Jim, I don't really care, but, yeah.
Suppose we have somebody here, just in case we have a question.
Okay.
Well, I, I know that Mr. Stevens and I both are attorneys at law, but I would feel more comfortable with the county attorney if providing any legal advice for this committee.
Certainly. Yeah, that's why I, I felt bad kind of putting you on the spot, but.
It's really, a really good thought, Nicole. If, if we're looking at, if we narrow the thing down to one or two or three, and they may say, none of those things meet legal muster for whatever reason, so it's probably a good idea that we don't waste a lot of time.
One, one thing that you mentioned earlier was possibly combining the, instead of having staggered terms, combining them, certainly for the election office, you know, and, and implementation, that would be easier, but I do believe, if my memory serves me correctly, from several months back, when I was doing research on the private acts, the school board and road board changing those terms, so that the zones that were named the same thing would coincide on the election cycle, I do believe the school board statutes, the state law governs that they are to be staggered terms. So we can obviously go back and, and double check that, but I do believe that's mandated.
The county attorney's office can answer all those questions.
Another thing, I mean, this is down the road, but if we do decide to change something, we got to look at the fact that you will have to send out new butter cards.
We will.
In the expense of that and things, but that's, of course, right down the road.
We will, that's down the road.
Yeah.
You know, my, my thought when this committee was first formed was that the committee was going to meet, and because of the rush to get started, it, it was my understanding that this committee, it was this committee's desire to make a decision as quickly as possible, and then implement it as quickly as possible. Of course, for, for us, that would be a nightmare after just having gone through this, but certainly the, the election commission does not, the election commission does not have the authority over these particular ones in general. We don't have a say-so or an opinion about what those lines are to be. When we're directed what the lines are, we will conduct the elections accordingly.
Right.
But that is, that is an expense. It's around, this time it's costing somewhere in the neighborhood of seventy thousand dollars between postage and printing expenses and so on. Seventy, seventy-five thousand to send out cards countywide. But then I, I think I was talking to Stevens in the recent days, and I understood that maybe it's not the desire of the committee to implement this immediately, as I was thinking, as something that the committee would, would look at, if any changes were to be made, first of all, and if they are, at what time would be the best time to make that implementation, next year, two, three years, four years down the road, or whenever the case may be.
That's exactly right. Anything else? If you look at your calendar, I would suggest that our next meeting be Wednesday, August the fifteenth, be three weeks from today, and I think a week after the election. I think. Is that okay with everyone? Same time, five o'clock, okay?
Is it possible to have a meeting at five thirty?
It is.
If it wouldn't be too much of any inconvenience.
Five thirty's okay.
Thank you.
Did everyone receive the redistricting guide that I forwarded?
Okay, Mike, you're, you're the one that's got a lot of work to do. Once again, we've.
It's what I'm here for, sir.
We do appreciate, we do appreciate all of your effort, and as you open those things and look at them, give yourself plenty of time to try to understand them, and then call Mike and you make clarity in any way. And we'll take a look at, a more serious look at at least three different scenarios, and, and what maybe Commissioner Stevens was talking about a little bit earlier too, that that redistricting committee can. Okay. Anything else? Thank you for being here, and we're drawn.